Let the big engines go by, the United States of America, and to the honor of the British Commons, one nation, one God, indivisible, and indelible in its justice for all.
Okay, we got orders, we have some special proclamation tonight? This proclamation, the Village of Lawwell proclamation, whereas the 310 General Support Aviation Battalion, 10th Combat Aviation Brigade, 10th Division, along with their leadership, have assisted our community in numerous endeavors over the years, whereas here in the Village of Lawwell, we received continued assistance with the placement of American flags throughout our village, the hanging of the seven banners of those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice in front of the Lawwell Academy, and the commitment to the restoration of the 102-year-old Lawwell American Legion building, the Lawwell Assistance, and the preservation of its history museum, whereas you serve as an eternal part of the volunteers who help make community events as nationally recognized as they've become, whereas there has been a continuous effort assisting with numerous fundraisers throughout the years, supporting various community organizations, whereas your strength and perseverance only solidify your bond with our village, whereas your unit continues to simplify your commitment not just to the military, to the community of which you serve, now therefore, I, Joseph Piggel, on behalf of the Villages Trustees, the residents of the Village of Lawwell, present this key to the Village, to the 310 General Support Aviation Battalion, 10th Combat Aviation, 10th Division, along with their leadership. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay. We had approval of next, May 26th, special board meeting?
No corrections, I'll make the motion to approve those minutes, ma'am.
I'll second.
All in favor? Approval of vouchers?
We've got two sets this time vouchers because of the new fiscal year, we're starting from the old company, last year's, you've got the general fund, $8,376.06, water fund, $45,272.67, sewer fund, $14,679.67, and capital fund, $823,783.75. Now, in the new year, fifth new fiscal year, general fund, we've got $119,727.05, water fund, $33,550.04, sewer fund, $28,052.72. And I move these vouchers as other, I need, you think?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. By Street's utility reconstruction project, the only thing I have on that is we're still waiting to close out the long-term bond with EFC, and the last word I had is probably going to be next month, July, I don't know if time will say anything different?
I haven't heard anything different.
Pretty much where we stand on that one, right?
Yeah, I don't have any other updates.
Okay, the next item on phase two is a wastewater treatment plan on the upgrades. I'd like to do a resolution tonight, because this has to be posted for 30 days. We do have monies in our sludge account that allow pay for this sludge removal, but the problem is it's dedicated strictly for that, and so we have to do a resolution in order to be able to take any money out of it. Anybody got any questions on that?
Make the motion.
Next is also, we gotta do a roll call vote on that.
Yeah, I'll make it. I'll make it.
Sorry, just a quick question, is there a amount, specific amount in that resolution?
No, I didn't hear the thousand.
No, but I know how much is there, I don't want to have to use all of it.
I just wanted to make sure correlated with what is in that.
We listed up the 900.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's enough to pay what we're doing too.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure correlated with what was in there in our budget for the projects. Okay.
That way it'll leave us, help us down the road as we're paying other bills or something.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? I think I do a roll call. Myself, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
All right, good time going on. The other, get anything more on that?
Oh yeah, sure, I have an update. So, all four contractors are progressing well on site, American Process Group, EPG, is the lagoon contractor, they began work in late May on desludging, dredging the lagoons, so that's now underway, it's going to be a long process of deslugging and de-watering, but it's good to see it started. All the other work is progressing well, and, yeah, that's, I'm going to have, um, I do want to note that we opened bids on the 24th for the aeration diffuser equipment, and Henderson Brothers was the only bidder, they did have a good price, so that was within our budget, so the bond resolution that was passed.
But I'm just going to say, the only problem with that is we can't award that then, we're done with the bond resolution.
Right, I was going to ask Joe Russell when the earliest we can, we can award based on that bond resolution.
The bond resolution should be done this week, it was, yeah, the permissive referendum would run this week?
It's the 26th.
26th.
It's next week.
Yeah, next week will be the permissive referendum, and then you have the 20-day stop period.
Okay.
So you're talking another month.
Can they award after the permissive referendum period?
They'll not recommend it. Legally, they can, but never recommend it.
Because of possible challenges?
Yeah.
I mean, I've never had one in the year that have been doing this, but the one time I let them award during permissive referendum period, it's going to be a challenge.
So we won't be able to award probably until around the July meeting?
Unless we change that, the July meeting is going to be the 20th unless this board decides they want to change it. Only reason I'm saying this is because that's fair week, other, they still want to, might as well get it in order right now, I guess, July 20th meeting is fair week. Do we still want to hold our meeting then, or do we want to move it to a different date? Last year, we went ahead and held it, because we're starting at four, we didn't have a problem, we were out of here. It's up to the board what they want to do.
I don't have a problem.
Pick it up and order it.
I'm following me.
Yes. So that's when we've got to be able to do it.
That's all I have for wastewater.
The ground, kind of probably want to talk on this a little bit, groundwater wells about that project, but we did open bids on that, and the bids came in very good, actually, and you have that paperwork?
I do, yeah.
Actually, I have it right here. So basically, we're all set, we can award those, like you checked everything?
Yes, yeah, so I went through their bids and made sure they had all the proper documents. I called their references, they got good reviews from everyone, I talked to them.
So what we need a motion for, we're going to need two motions, one of them would be to Manford Construction, they're out of Weedsport, New York, they were the general contractor, their bid was $2,076,333. So we need a motion to approve that bid. And this is for the groundwater project.
So I do want to note that the motion should probably include that you are accepting the D-Duck alternate for the HDP pipe.
All right, general construction contract number one with bid item number 22, HDP alternate, except.
So that alternate deducted approximately $157,000 off their contract for them to use HDP piping instead of Duck Lire piping.
And up in that area, it should be a better piping, it should go to ground faster, anything else on that?
And they can also get a lot quicker than Duck Lire too, so Manfred wants to start in September with the HDP piping, if they do Duck though, they wouldn't be able to start until the spring next year.
I'll make that motion.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Our second bid contract is for the electrical, and that's through SC Spencer Electric, 5940 Spencer Road, Constableville, New York. Basically, it's for electrical construction contract number two, and that's in the amount of $1,235,900. Need a motion to, go ahead with that one.
I'll make a motion, go ahead with that. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think you have anything else you want to do with that?
Yeah, just wanted to piggyback on what Joe was saying, that the bids came in really, really under budget, which is awesome, they almost reflected what construction costs were like before all the inflation happened over the last couple of years or so, so it's really, really glad to see that. I also wanted to talk about the scheduling. We wrote the documents to allow the contractors to begin work in the spring next year, both contractors are indicating they want to begin towards the fall this year, so just wanted to guys be aware of that.
We have, we have no concerns at all.
No, right, we agree with that.
Because of the area that the project's getting done, you know, back in the woods, it's not going to impact anyone, so sooner we get it done, the better off we are.
I mean, the main reason I think we pushed it out was because part of the problem right now with all of, anybody doing project, is availability of materials, but if they can get the material and get started, we're more than happy to have them get started.
Yeah, I would say the electrical contractor, there's, some of their items are going to leak into next year because they do have, some of their items are very long lead time items, so. That's all I have. Well, thanks.
Okay, LED street lighting, really probably getting sick of here now. We're getting closer every week, basically where we stand right now is, it's amazing the stuff we have to send back to National Grid. Right now, we had to apply to National Grid, and they're reviewing it for the three new lights that we wanted to install, so we're waiting to hear back on that. We had to give National Grid every single pole number, the wattage, date installed of the LED lights as they, that's been completed, so we're good to go on that. We've made contact with them because they also got to come back and inspect all those disconnect switches, and supposedly, possibly even yet this week, might be up here to do that, so we are moving forward on those, it's just been a long haul dealing with National Grid. Finally see the light, I think, and it's all, anybody got any questions on that? Rezoning of industrial zones, calling on that, Tim, is that supposed to go before the planning board tomorrow?
Yeah.
It's on their agenda, I know.
We can, do we have a public hearing already?
I think I've scheduled it for this meeting.
Did you schedule one for this meeting?
I thought we did, maybe not, no?
We didn't know.
Maybe we were waiting for them.
Public hearing, we were waiting for the calling.
Okay, okay, so we should, I have one next one.
I'll make the motion that we have a public hearing for the...
Anything else on that? Comprehensive plan, that's still in work, so we're kind of getting that narrowed down to like 129 or more pages, and reviewing a few things on it, it's getting, now it's closer to 30 pages, so.
Yeah, so Eddie Trustee has time, take a look at it, I talked with Helen yesterday, I'm actually going through it now, if you have any comments or anything, put them on the side, she'd like to hear comments, I think Helen's done a great job in here, her and Kathy both have put a lot of work into it, so I think us as Village trustees, members, whatever, we should take a look at it.
Dan, Helen explained why they cut it out.
Yes, there's extra information on the side, so if you have any, any comments, we'd love to hear them, so.
City of the Year Award.
Yes, we have the nomination, we had five crews nominated, and we nominated one today because they had to be disqualified, and we had a pizza luncheon for the Village Crew, and Paul Dines, they were nominated by a citizen, and so we realized next year we're going to have to exclude Village employees to make this thing work the way it's working, which I think is working very well, the government class again, looked at the applications, there were 31 votes, and I think the first place voter got 15, the second place voter got eight, and then the other eight were scattered amongst the three others, so we'll be making that award, and the fairgrounds on the parade night, the 19th, after the parade ends, and Josh Fitzgerald has agreed to, as the first recipient, be there to give the award. And the award winner will receive a plaque, and they will go on the wall out there, and the award winner will receive a gift certificate to our local establishment, along with the winning person that nominated, the winning applicant, so it's going good, that's pretty much all in DPD set.
Dan, would you be all ready to fire the letter for our nomination?
You mean to get the...
Not right now.
Just to the board from the, the one they didn't look at.
Oh, I thought you wanted to read the one as a winner. Yes, go ahead.
So, as you heard, Dan, we were, the DPW crew and myself were nominated, and I just wanted to get the letter out so, so people could hear it, it's dated April 11th, we would like to nominate Superintendent Paul Dines in the Village of Lawwell Department of Public Works for Citizen of the Year Award for 2022. Superintendent Dines does an excellent job managing the Village of Lawwell, streets, plowing, sweeping, leaf pickup, road repair, street replacement, decorations, and more, also solving many problems that occur in and around the Village of Lawwell with regards to water and sewer issues. Superintendent Dines and the DPW workers are all very pleasant and accommodating on a regular basis, we're the most grateful, we are most grateful for all that you do for us, we're proud of our villagers, enjoying the life here, wearing the arms of Goodheart. So, it just makes me feel proud that the DPW crew is doing such a good job that we actually got on the floor, so that's why I wanted to read it. Thank you.
And then I will, I'll tell you that they participated last year and nominated somebody else, so we're very pleased that the Goodhearts take the time to nominate somebody each year, last year we had seven nominations, this year we had five, I'm hoping by going in front of the contingent of the fair, that we get more next year, and I'm hoping that maybe in the near future, I'll say it here first, we're trying to convince the county that they need to do a County Citizen of the Year Award, so, because right now, I had a lot of people that work in the village, I shouldn't say a lot, I had one, that works in the village, that they wanted to nominate, and this person was very worthy, but it is a Village Award, but then I got thinking, hey, there's a lot of county residents out there that certainly do a lot for not just a particular village, but a county, so I'm going to present that to them, and if they're watching, I'm going to come and present it. Thank you.
Any updates on music in the park, Karen?
Music in the park? I want to bring up food trucks in a second, but first I want to say that we have a full roster of bands, and it's on our village website, and Danielle, I like the way you did it so that they don't have to scroll down, I mean, it's right on the homepage, and it's colored, it's nice, we do not have a band right now for July the 5th, but I think we're going to have one, and like I said, the whole roster of bands is there, I've had somebody approach me that would like to run their food truck there, and I told them I didn't think that would be appropriate, but I don't think it's my decision to make because it's a board decision, but I think if we allow a food truck in, where would you start and where would you end, and I think that it would be a failure for all of them because unlike the Food Truck Fridays, there's maybe 300 people show up to this thing, and there's 10 food trucks, that's one for every 30 people, and not only that, the Legion does put their food on, and we may have, the fire department, they're talking about maybe doing some popcorn and stokels, and we're suggested today, as far as the movie by my grandson, that we look at, I think he said Coco from a Disney movie?
Oh, yeah.
So, that's in...
I mean, my thought, Dan, is where the Legion seller, hamburgs and dogs sometimes there, basically, they started this a few years ago with their cousin and everything. I think if we allow food trucks in there for that particular night, I think we're infringing on them, I don't think we should do that.
And I agree, but I just wanted, I just wanted, after I talked with this gentleman yesterday, and explained it to him, he was, he was very understanding, but maybe by putting it out, now we have, you know, it's a board decision in case others approach us, so I'll make the motion that due to the fact that we have limited attendance or what have you, that we allow the Legion to continue, along with the fire department with what they want to do, and we leave it at that, I talked with Lee about the fire department and stokels and popcorn, and he thinks that's great, they are expanding their menu this year, can't tell you what it is, but he said they will have an expanded menu, so.
But stokels and popcorn too is not really competing with what they're selling.
No, and just a reminder, when you look on the website, the first week, which is two weeks from yesterday, will be starting at 5:00 instead of 6:00 because we have two bands, we have 5 o'clock, we have Undefeated, they're a local youth band, if you go out on the internet and listen to them, they're excellent, and then it's 7 o'clock, the county favorites, Nelson Brothers, and then every week thereafter will be doing that, and I guess Monday I would be with Rebecca Watson on Linkin Lewis to promote it on her website. Thank you.
I need a second on the food trucks.
Oh, I made the motion.
You're making the motion, but I need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, summer recreation, I believe we're all set for this year, contracts inside, partial payments going to be authorized tonight when we get vouchers, so we can get started over there, anybody got any questions on that for this year?
Wait, yeah, let me just bring up something that I learned from the council, they will give us $300 a child for anybody outside of the village, so it could be more than $10,000, it could be less, but they will give us $300, and when I went back and reread the letter, I understand what they're saying, they're basing that on what they figured, I guess what we figured the cost was per child, so if we have 33 kids, that's going to be your $10,000, if we have more than that, it's going to be more, if we have less than that, it's going to be less, and all we have to do is after we get the roster, submit it to the number of kids and whatever they want, and they'll give us the money.
Is that a valid proposal, or is that ridiculous?
They decided if you read Mr. Pici's letter, it said this year only.
Yeah, moving forward, I think we need to come up with an idea for next year.
Yeah.
And while this is all being hashed out, I just want to make sure too, that, I don't know, when this is all being hashed out, I did talk to Mr. Myers, is he aware of that as well, so we have to make, I mean, I know they've provided where the residency is, but just to make sure somebody's not telling, talking, yeah, just want to make sure he's aware of it as well, so we don't have to go through the program and say, hey buddy, where do you live?
Dan told me they were able to track that.
Yeah, I'm sure they do, I just want to make sure they're on the same page, I thought.
Because I talked with him about that before we did the contract. Anybody else have any...
One other thing, Joe, last month, they were at the special meeting on the which I presented that Joel Company would like to present for the community seller, are we going to do that next month?
I thought you were going to try and set it up for me.
Well, I can't, but we were going to talk about it as a co-board because there was only me and Chuck for that special meeting. It was a 20-minute presentation.
You answered my question.
It might be Zoom, it might be in person.
I think it's fine.
So if you want to go ahead and contact your...
But they're willing to, no, no, that's fair week too.
Tell them, tell them we want to hold the 20 minutes.
They want to push it to August, I don't know.
Or, yeah, tell them if we can get them 20 minutes, if they want to push dogs and get more time, how's that sound?
Anybody else have any old business they want to bring up? Or is it their, no, we'll move on to new business. Craft surcharges, May 22, sewer was zero, water was zero, there was nothing to do, really.
Don't prolong the craft, crafts been in good contact with me, I emailed, sent an email from Eric Lee two weeks ago, just wanting to know if things are going, let me know that they were going to ramp up a little bit on their cooling system, so we want to see a little more, higher water intake, which we haven't, so, are there any tools there?
Did you have much in the menu?
No.
It must have, it's on here, but I didn't think we got it.
Yeah, no.
Okay, Juneteenth holiday, which would be celebrated on Monday, June 20th, little research I did, it's definitely a federal holiday, it's definitely recognized by the state of New York, CSE recognizes it, little banks, I guess, are going to be closed, post offices, schools closed, the town's planning on closing, so this is up to the board if we don't do the same.
Make the motion to be closed. No second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Because if you don't do it well, it's going to come up, the next year's contract will be added.
Well, here's, I know the county is not closed, but seeing how I'm kind of Village Park too, that means I get it off.
Yeah, yeah, here's the, here's the why I think you should do that, number one, you should follow federal guidelines, and a lot of times what happens when you got to deal with somebody that's cold, like a magnet, when they come in with these murders and... migrant or two, when they come in with these murders and you can't get the question answered, now you're in a pickle. You're better off not being open. So, and they deserve it.
It is kind of a tough time for us to be closed because of collecting taxes and hopefully we can.
There's no mail and I can't go to the bank anyways.
And there's no mail. If it was the last day of the month, I would say yes, we wanted to be open. Even if you couldn't go to the bank, you can pay.
Okay, Fair Parade decor. Does everybody got a copy of that resolution, twenty twenty-two dash six?
Yes, I'm against it because we don't cooperate with Fair.
We pretty much, we pretty much do this every year, so basically we need a motion to pass that resolution.
I make the motion. No second.
Home favor?
Aye.
And one thing, Danielle, she finally found it, we were looking this afternoon. Because one other thing that always happens, you guys don't have a copy of this, I only printed it out one quick just before the meeting, that's where we're all working, what we're getting. Usually, the Village of LaVoe, we do a thing at parking. And every year it's, and so I've got it here, basically it's Village of LaVoe Parking for Fair Parade. The Village of LaVoe Board of Trustees has removed the one and two-hour parking restrictions after 2:00 PM on Tuesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, for the Lewis County Fair Parade. Vehicles parked before 2:00 PM in these restricted area spaces will be ticketed over the designated timeline. Great spectators are also reminded that lawn chairs taped up cannot be used on village streets reserved in parking space during the day. These items will be removed by the village personnel. So we need a motion to pass this, and I believe we also put this on our website too. You don't have a problem with that, we do it every year, right?
I'll make the motion to eliminate the two-hour parking restriction after 2:00 PM on the Fair Parade night.
No second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Does anybody want to see this? I'm sorry, I didn't get a copy of it, everybody. Does anybody get a copy of the Rink Home Updates newsletter? I did talk to Nikki, Nikki this afternoon and he wanted to be here tonight, but he's fighting the bugs, so he wasn't able to make it.
Meeting next Tuesday, right?
Yeah. And they're trying to get their banner done and some other stuff. Anybody have any questions on that?
Well, we're supposed to be working on the subcommittee meeting. Chuck, for CGI for that promotional video, we actually, neither one of us had heard a thing about himself.
I didn't.
And we've reached out to Mr. Bruno about it a couple of times.
Thank you.
But we haven't got any response, so we will, not before we find out anything.
LaVoe Academy and Central School, Davenport Place sign. Basically, this is something we wanted to do quite a few years ago and they didn't want us to do it. Now they've sent us a letter asking us to do this. I think it's a good idea. Paul and I have looked at it a little bit. I know Paul's discussed this with the state, they're going to come up and mark the location where they feel we should put the signs. We also talked to the superintendent, didn't you, Paul?
No, yes.
The only thing we'd like to change is if you look at the second paragraph where they're asking, provide a sign at the intersection, Davenport Place and State Street that only allows right-hand turns during hours. That really, she's got that wrong because that should be, I mean, basically it's no left turn. We want to change those hours. Instead of eight to eight-thirty, we want it seven-thirty to nine. And then where she's got three to three-thirty, we look it to be two-thirty to four.
So being there as much as I am, that's a good addition because sometimes three-fifteen is hostile and hostile, but it could be to three-thirty or so. Extending that to four to five is a perfect solution.
This will require a public hearing, correct, Mr. Russell?
But I'm thinking that needs to be reworded because basically we don't want a left turn, we don't know.
She's saying we're allowing only allowing right.
Yes, only allowing right. Only allowing right turns. So she's, it says only allowing right.
Only.
So basically saying no left-hand turns.
You're saying we should extend both ends of that.
Yeah, the morning time and the afternoon.
Seven-thirty to nine and two-thirty to four.
Yeah. That's okay with the board.
Maybe it's time to clear everything up.
And Joe?
Yeah.
We need to redo this as a local law because otherwise we're losing our enforcement.
Right.
We are not going to have to take this before county.
No, I think you're better.
Well, pardon, is it priority zoning?
I'm sorry?
Is parking in the zone or?
It's not parking, it's just not allowing any turns.
Yeah, you're right.
It's traffic.
It's just traffic.
We're still going to have a public hearing.
Yeah, but doesn't it?
It will have to go.
No.
But you only get a public hearing. My question to Paul or you or both is how quickly can we have a public hearing? And they want to implement it in September, obviously. Will we be ready to have a public hearing?
Well, that's what I was.
Yeah, we can get it ready.
I was hoping Joe could get the draft up to us, we could have a public hearing. I was hoping again next month.
Yeah, I'll do that. Right, because we'd like to get it into the school's newsletter, just like no parking on water stairs, so people are well aware of it before school comes in.
We're saying seven-thirty to nine in the morning and two-thirty to four in the afternoon.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, I got the letter right here.
Yes, basically change that to seven-thirty to nine and then two-thirty to four in the afternoon.
And I talked to Rebecca and she was extremely happy. She didn't think we'd be able to do it that long, that's why she only put eight-eight-thirty for it. I mean, yeah, but I still think if we go short of appearing, it's going to help a little bit, but it's not going to eliminate the big problem.
But Paul's, Paul's got some other signs and things to order and this way he can go get his signs ordered.
Especially in the morning.
Get everything in before school starts.
And I've said this before, especially in the morning, that crossing guard should be on the other side of the road, select about ten kids and then walk them across. So that every time a kid comes out on the street, you know, stopping traffic, especially in the morning. Now in the afternoon, that wouldn't solve that, but in the morning, it certainly solved a lot of it.
We talked about that one.
I think it's a good idea.
Certainly, but we can probably try that next year, wouldn't we?
I mean, that.
In the afternoon, it's the opposite of course.
Tim, I've raised this issue about that for years. I think crossing guards do an excellent job, but then walk one across, then walk another one across and.
They got to walk it all there themselves and stop traffic.
If it's not raining, if it's not raining, gather a few and do it all at once.
Right, exactly.
Well, I think with the people not parking on water stairs, that's.
That's where it comes in, people crossing the road.
The bottleneck is fast.
Yeah, we brought that up and it just didn't go. Yeah, that was, yeah.
But we probably need a motion to.
I'll make the motion that we have the public hearing in July twenty.
But first off, consider we do a motion to make that change and add more.
No, I wouldn't worry about it.
All right, Dan, go ahead.
I'll make the motion that we have public hearing in July twenty to change Davenport to right turn only during school days from the prescribed time. Mr. Russell, would you repeat those?
Seven-thirty to nine AM, two-thirty to four PM.
That's my motion.
Home favor?
Aye.
All right, Lewis County letter from Ryan. I think we probably kicked that one around enough, but everybody's got it.
I, yes, I'd like to. I sent this, as everybody knows, a response to that because quite honestly, I'm extremely proud of what the village taxpayers, the village has done for the benefit, not only the residents of Lewis County, but the residents of the village, but the residents of Lewis County and beyond that, and the employment that they get and receive coming into the village. I don't know why anybody suspects that we have ever been on Fair and Cream Cheese Festival. I think we've done more than the county has. I don't know why we are verging something to the Lewis County Fair. I talked to a fair board member and they said they're unaware of it. And I don't know what we have done other than ask for Community Cup to be consistent with their application like anybody else. And as far as what we have done in bonding with that, I hope the author of that letter might now appreciate more than what we do, and if we don't, then there's a problem. So that's all.
I think that's what it is, I think there's a problem. I mean, I, I was, actually myself totally disgusted how the whole thing was handled. I think the letter from Ryan was wrong because he had some misinformation possibly, shouldn't have been sent. The letter from you, Dan, was accidentally written, but I don't think it was handled right on either side. How it got leaked to the press, which I think is crazy, I know it didn't come from the village, how it got leaked there and got out there, it's kind of like a pissing match between school kids, you know what I mean? So if there is a problem, it's not just because of work at the county, we should be getting together and solving that problem, not throwing words back at each other.
I hope, I hope that that can happen, Tim.
I do too.
And we've done that in the past. And I hope that moving forward, it can be done in an appropriate way. When, when, when letters are read and what have you, their correspondence, and one needs to be aware that when you're going to put something in writing, it's there in writing. You can say it and maybe get away with it, but when you put it in writing, and add letter to us.
Well, I talked to Ryan personally about it and he showed that in legislature, so that said something there too. I mean, that didn't get stopped right there.
Well, he only carved in two legislators, if you read.
Well, apparently they all see. So if that's the case, if there is a problem between two municipalities, they should be sitting down at the table and talking about it, they shouldn't be throwing words back at each other. That's just my opinion.
My, I agree with that opinion to a certain extent. And my.
I'm not criticizing your life.
No, no. But what I'm saying is, if somebody wants to, be it us, if we take the first swipe, my remark to that would be make sure that your facts are straight. And if you get the first swipe taken at you, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but as a member of the village contingents for nineteen years, I'm good with the findings.
Yeah, and I think you did very well. But what I'm saying is the reaction shouldn't be immediate, you know what I mean? Because then you're, you're acting in aggression, you know what I mean? You're not thinking it through. Well, your letter was very thoughtful.
I thought it through, number one. And I don't know that I necessarily agree with that because sometimes if you sit on something for two or three weeks, that's not good either. I get it, sometimes you got to take a step back, but that wasn't the time to take a step back in my eyes. So it's over with and hopefully we can move forward.
I think moving forward is the key.
And I think it's up to them to approach us.
Just speaking up to and have, excuse me, have anything to do with a response or whatnot, is just me speaking as a double play member and supporter, always been a supporter of Summer Rec. For Summer Rec to be the, get into this banter back and forth as Tim, you know, alluded to, and you're right, if there's issues, take care of them, but to bring that up, what this has to do with Summer Rec is beyond me. Right. Just doesn't make any sense to me why that would be.
And fairness to Mr. Beagle, this letter was dated, marked something, and it took, this would have all been a lot simpler if he had responded a lot sooner. And yes, Mr. Murphy, it had to do with Summer Rec, but we had to have a two-page letter and everything else that was wrong, we were doing.
Right, that was, that had nothing to do with, right. I mean, if they wanted to say no or yes to it, that was what.
But now that we've talked about it, let's, let's move forward.
I asked Danielle to put this thing from Mark O'Connor, it's basically so the board has an idea of what's going on uptown after, come July twenty-fifth, the state's painting project, that's pretty much tells what we're going to do. But I thought, in case anybody asks questions, you'd have the information, what was going on?
There's going to be no parking for three days and then two days after that on Main Street.
They'll be closing it right up because of the milling and then when they, I think they have to run a couple of weeks on the mill before they can pay them.
My question is, do the businesses know all this too?
Supposedly, according to their email here, they're supposed to get the word out to everybody, including the press. Have you heard anything on it?
No.
Because of that, we'll hear about it.
One thing, I just, and again, I'm not throwing stones at the DOT or the job that they do, but the timing of this too, I believe, it wasn't last year, it might have been the year before. The timing there is good because back to the school issue, at one time they put up the sign saying that there was milling. And, well, this is a different, this is a different street, but on Bossard, you know, Bossard Street, that was, they got to make sure that the signs aren't in a dangerous place where you can't see out of it. It's a different place, but I just wanted, the timing is good, a little bit more quiet and there's certainly, there's certainly some other time.
There's just the other ones, information on the food truck Fridays this year. Basically, they can have information posted soon. We got a nice letter from the Stork and Society, basically thanking Paul and his crew for helping get the Old Fountain moved up to a safe, secure spot for them. I thought it was a really nice letter. Anybody have any questions on any of the course on that? Do you have a copy of the letter, Tim?
Yeah.
Okay, officer committee reports, Village Attorney. I'm going to talk a little bit about the clock on the four corners. I guess there was a little problem with a controller that controls the music, but talking with Sherry Voro and working with Paul and Mr. Voro, luckily we had a spare controller here, so I think they're getting the music back up and running down there. But that problem should be corrected. But looking back at, the clock was actually installed June seventeenth, I think in twenty-seventeen. So it's pushing five years old, it's never been serviced. And White's Clock and Clearton Northeast, Palastine, New York, they worked with a gentleman there and installed the clock originally on the four corners. I got a quote from them, and nothing cheap these days, but, I don't know, it's total cost for one year planned maintenance agreement, five hundred and fifty dollars. Basically, that includes clean, lubricate, adjust, test each unit, test each unit covered. Service will cover normal maintenance, but will not include complete overhaul or replacement parts. It goes on to three major repairs or replacement parts are required. Your service representative will confer with the owner and submit costs to the owner before performing said repairs or replacements. Each maintenance call includes up to two hours of labor with additional hours billed at ninety dollars an hour. Does not cover damages caused by accident, fire, water, forces of nature. Says all maintenance agreements will be handled only by trained personnel qualified to handle inspection, relocation, adjustment, repairs necessary to ensure their operating efficiency. Additional service calls beyond those provided for agreement will be charged. Additional service calls beyond those provided for agreement will be charged at a preferred rate of four hundred dollars an hour and ninety dollars for each hour thereafter. I'm just throwing this out, if you think we oughta get signed up for a service contract or not. I say nothing's been done to that since it was installed.
Does anybody know what the clock must start with?
Fifty-some thousand dollars. I could get you the exact figures, because I have, well, I have the exact figures in the office.
Close enough. It is. I, I'm personally married and dealing with maintenance contracts in my previous job. Uh, five hundred and fifty dollars in today's environment, and they're coming from Pulaski. Uh, I'm assuming that includes their trip. I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair rate. I think it's very reasonable. I make, I, I, I'm for it, but.
I'm, my thought was that we got that expensive piece of equipment, it should be checked over.
Yep.
Especially it's been five years since having to go.
Every year contract or just one time a year?
No, we can renew it here if we can want to.
That's even better, yeah. I'll make the motion that we, we take eight-year contract.
I'm sorry. Home favorite?
I have neither.
If you want to know Charlie, I can dig it out. It's got a whole file on it.
Just wondered, fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so it was over, it was, it was over, I believe it was over fifty-five thousand.
I believe he's gonna give us a report on what he does, so next year we can figure out whether we need him to come back or, you know, maybe we can wait for three years.
Now that you wanna do it, I'll, I'll just go ahead and call him and talk to him. Plus, I'm gonna want him to send us a, a new quote because the dates he's got on here from like January to December, and I'm thinking it's gonna be from June to, next, May or whatever. All right, I'll move forward on that one then. Quick treasure, do you have any?
No.
Chief of Police?
Uh-huh.
Superintendent?
Yep, I have a few things. Uh, just to let public know, Barracks will be in here on Friday, starting to mill, uh, streets for paving. Um, they will be milling sections or total roads, um, of different streets. Campbell Street is gonna get redone, Sharp Street is gonna be redone, Iron Ave is gonna be redone, and Jackson Street's gonna be redone and part of the Ross Road. Um, tentatively, they're gonna mill on Friday, um, possibly start paving on Monday or Tuesday. So, um, everything will hopefully be done before the fair. Um, we are, we are doing a project on Jackson Street, putting some drainage in. So possibly Jackson Street, well, Jackson Street will not be paved until, um, till Barracks comes back and does the DOT paving, and then they're gonna catch up with that.
What about the lower end of Clinton?
In the lower end of Clinton, thank you, I was sad you were going to say. The lower end of Clinton will be done too. Shouldn't take long.
While we're at, when those streets are done, can we possibly start with the, I know we've talked about this, uh, the breakaway signs? For the lower end of Clinton Street, there are a lot of those poles that are breakaway signs, which technically are supposed to be that.
That was brought up to me today, I didn't realize you were, I may all, I'm gonna go around and look.
The one on High Street is, yeah.
It's, that's a state standard. They have a solid ground and a breakaway pole. I don't know if that is a standard for a village.
Well, it's, uh.
Safety-wise, yes. But if you look at that, you've got cars doing thirty miles an hour lefts. Those breakaways are designed with cars hitting, like fly up in the air and.
Hump filter.
Yeah. So, but I'm, I'm gonna look into that. Somebody called me today about it.
I don't think I'm very honest to, uh, Campbell Street is weird.
The ones on the corner like Campbell Street and whatnot, if they, if the state put them up, they will be a stub with a breakaway on it. Um, so, um, if you get up to my apartment, the fountain is now a hundred percent done. Um, the LED lights came back yesterday, yesterday and I installed them. Fun, fun. Um, the other thing I was gonna bring up, and I forgot to talk to Joe about it. Um, we had put in a budget to spray foam our DPW grabs, the ceiling in it. So the building's made out of brick, uh, wooden ceiling with a steel seal roof. Uh, our, our heating bill up there just keeps going up and up and up. Um, so I got three quotes from three different, uh, spray foam manufacturers and contractors. Um, and they're telling me, you know, you can put anywhere up to six inches in there. Um, so I, I kinda went with a two-inch. Um, I can't tell you what the R value is, but it's gonna save us money in the long run.
Fourteen.
Is it R fourteen?
About seven per inch.
Yeah, so I've got Northern Spray Foam and Contracting out of Carthage. Uh, they're gonna do two inches at seventeen thousand dollars, so.
That's cheaper.
That was cheapest. I had, uh, two inches from another company and they were twenty-one thousand. Then the third company was, uh, twenty-six thousand, so. And all three of them are insured and they do it all the time, so. I wasn't sure if I needed board approval for that.
Who's budgeted?
We haven't had a budget.
Didn't you budget it?
Okay.
And actually, I think that came in under what we had budgeted.
Yes, I think we budgeted twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Somewhere in there, yeah.
Okay, so that's it. Just thought I'd let you know. Just trying to reduce the cost.
Who was the one you're gonna go with?
Northern Spray Foam and Contracting out of Carthage. Al Daniel.
We had an issue once, Paul, years ago, we sprayed paintings as a village ourselves, the fire department and all the cars that keep banked that painted. So make sure he's kept.
This is spray foam and ceiling, yeah, he is insured and he does it, so. Yeah, this is all inside him, in the ceilings. And we will be going around with your soon, uh, doing crosswalks, curving, repainting them now that the concrete has cured some more on some of our block street projects, maybe the paint will stay. Um, and as I keep going on and on, um, Joe and I had, uh, um, a couple of people come and talk to us about a pickleball court. Not sure if you guys know what pickleball is, but it's the new pad for your, older generation.
I've gone off more about everybody's, even guys as young as you.
I know, I've been watching that, me too. So we have decided to, um, turn one of the tennis courts at Veterans Park into a pickleball court. Um, I've already got it laid out. We're gonna spray paint it or paint it. Um, and I think it'll work out, but right now they play at South Louis, which is part of Double Play, so.
What we're doing is not part of Double Play.
Correct.
We're just doing that.
What we're doing is, it's gonna be open for anyone.
No charge, everybody, no charge.
So, and the way I looked at it, those tennis courts up there would be line use, but tennis courts don't, the basketball courts. We just put green rooms up backwards, two years ago, tons of kids, so I'm doing the furthest away tennis court, so it won't be any interruption to them, so. Anything else? Um, oh yes, I have one to look at. Sure, yeah. Um, we're looking into putting in the grant again for Veterans Park, um, to do the walkway, um, the concrete pad, all that. Um, I've been working with Bernie and Carr, who originally designed it back in, I believe, two thousand and fourteen. Um, we've done a few little modifications, so hopefully we'll get that in and maybe next year we can spruce up Veterans Park even more. This year we're, we're helping out the village band, we're, the village band is buying a storage building. So the DPW crew, it's gonna go on the right-hand side of the bandstand, so the DPW crew, we're gonna go up, pour a concrete pad, actually do some concrete around the bandstand, so it's easier to get up there and, uh, we'll go from there.
Now, the concrete pad you're talking about, for, I'm assuming, dancing purposes?
No, it's, no.
Are you gonna do one for that too, though?
We're gonna do basically a concrete pad out in front of the bandstand for handicapped accessible people to get in there for the bands or something's going on in there. Um, people that don't wanna sit in the grass, they can put their chairs there. So it's not gonna be a dedicated dance floor.
What would happen if off to the one side of the stage, we had maybe one quarter of the size of this group that all that wanted to? Cause like when you have polkas and like that, uh, most of them are just gonna listen to, and, and, you know, it's just a thought, I wouldn't have that idea.
You've seen them up there, they dance in the grass.
They do dance in the grass.
I don't wanna take too much away from the park.
The natural beauty.
I mean, in, in the plans that we have for that grant, um, there's concrete picnic tables with umbrellas spread out through the park, um, we're looking into more playground equipment and possibly, and I say possibly, a splash pad in the middle.
Splash pad.
So.
Father had a dance floor, Dan, to get one like they put in the tents, you know what I mean, that you just fold out. Something like that.
That is all I have, Joe. Next week, or next month, I don't say orders.
We're gonna keep you to twenty minutes, it's like the presentation.
Do we have anything on a capital future plan?
Uh, yes, a request, Joe, a couple of meetings ago, you said that Paul and you had worked on a capital. I don't know if you put anything in writing, if you did, I was hoping I could get a copy of it. Cause I've got some ideas that I'll present if I can see that document.
I don't think we have it in writing, it's just on a moment, like on the pickup truck or something.
What I would like to do is set sometime with Paul, maybe after summer and develop some kind of a, uh, a sketch plan that this village would have and put somewhere where it doesn't gather dust, like a lot of things that happen. And, um, and might, and might assist in, uh, the, the restricted funds where we put so that Danielle can, can work from there and, and, um.
We are restricting funds over here.
Oh, I know, but what I'm saying is, like in other words, we have a truck that comes up, okay, it's fifty thousand, we know where that's gonna come from and this is what we need to do, and it just happened right in twenty-twenty-three, twenty, and not only Paul, but Randy also with the, with the police department. Versus, oh, all of a sudden, when you count this year, we can just say, I realize sometimes you're gonna have something come up that wasn't for that year. But we, we can then plan and know, maybe we have to move something up a year and back something up. But just maybe have some kind of a footprint, that's all.
Cause like right now, with the police department, Dan, I think our plan is pretty much replace them after four years. Isn't that what we were trying to do? Three to four years.
Yeah, right now it's four. But the nice thing would be to have, otherwise, otherwise, quite honestly, I don't know that you really would need a capital and future planning. And I think once that's done, the capital and future planning would be maybe an annual thing where you would just review it quickly, but, you know, they ask if we got anything for capital and future planning, I don't know that there's a whole lot to just to be said. So that's just my thought.
Okay. Anything on personnel?
Personnel?
Finance?
Uh, I completed the audits of the office through March. Um, I'll get with Chuck and Mays, before I left, Mays was not ready, but I assume he probably is to bank, uh, saving it back by three, four months, yeah, so. So, uh, yeah, I know we went over it when, back in April, Chuck, we have, we can really do one together and see what you wanna do and we can push back and forth and go from there. Other than that, um, no real other information.
Ladies and fire department?
I attended a meeting, uh, don't know if there's really a whole lot to be said in a report. I will bring up that the fire department is looking at a junior fire department. Maybe Joe, if you would, give a, give the board a, a little synopsis of that.
Um, so we're still in the planning process, but yeah, our goal is to have some sort of junior program in place for sixteen, seventeen-year-olds, so they would have an option of joining and doing some training done before they would turn eighteen and become a full-fledged member, so. That's the gist of it right now, so.
That's pretty much, other, other than hopefully we'll be able to open the department up a couple of nights for the kids, when we have the bands. And there may be popcorn and snow cones, they're tossing that around. Other than that, the fire department's doing very, very well. This is my report.
Anything on police department?
Just the report, it was in the packet.
Planning boards, zoning boards, anything, municipal board?
Just a nice sharp meeting last night, what's going on?
Towns tomorrow, right? Something different there, right? Tony?
Um, the only thing that I would say is, we might wanna keep our eye on what the rails to trails is going to be and what it will, uh, what their thoughts are and what it might entail in the village. It seems to be a very, uh, question topic right now and, uh, I don't know that we'll be involved whatsoever, but we, we wanna keep our eye on it, I think, for the good of the, for the village. I'm not against necessarily something constructive, but I'm concerned that we do not want motorized vehicles running through the village, uh, on trails.
No, we don't need some way forward.
I, I, I will try to keep my eye on it and, uh, as that moves forward.
Recreation.
Um, talked about summer rec, um, really don't, yeah, nothing else has really come up.
And I do say, I think going down the road here, before next year, Danny and Town and the village, we're gonna need to get together and figure out how we're gonna, then the rec commission with Mike Young.
Got a couple of.
Gonna take care of next year.
Yeah, I've got a couple of ideas from a double play standpoint, and we'll see you off the, yeah.
Get the Rico newsletter, that's where all the information there. Bring us down to Public Common.
I'm speaking from the public, not my own, uh, information, but if you drive by the school on Danforth Place, people are parked this way and that way. And on one side that you park on, I thought all the parking spots were the same way. You see cars facing outward, Danforth Place, cars facing inward to the school, on the same side of the street. My understanding is when you park on the street, it's supposed to be parked below the track. But they, they do that on car cap too, they park, help their sculpture. Not, you know, on weekends sometimes, you see somebody pull up and they park on the wrong side of the road, going the wrong way. But I'm just bringing it up, and I know you passed the sidewalk, no parking on the sidewalk law. How's that, how's that going? Because I don't know, I'll talk to chief after specifically, but you make laws and then nobody buys it, but I know the gang on Water Street doesn't park the stretch of trail down there anymore.
The one doesn't on River Street.
River Street, whatever it is.
And motor down on the other lower end of the Water Street, but there are some locations where if you was bothering or, say you pulled your pickup up in front of your garage door. Then I know the case, I think on Bosser Street, when the state driving that street, they took part of your driveway, so chances are your back bumper might be hanging over the, so you kinda gotta give the homeowner a little bit of a break somewhat, no matter what your law is, my thought. I mean, it wasn't, we didn't plan on the state to come take their driveway out, and they wiped the road there years ago.
No, I'm just, I'm just bringing this to the board, I'm not, it's not my, not my, thank you.
Your partner in crime is here, I understand, I was missed last morning, so. Oh, Dan, it's better to be mistaken than something else. Anyway, Joe, your Christmas tree is dying up there. Uh, it's got a blade on it, uh, if you take a look at it, it's the same thing that I watched Dr. Leinbecker's trees die behind my, uh, house, is that, uh.
All seasons is already untapped.
They're gonna trim that, they gotta trim it out.
They're already untapped.
Are they looking at it? Because it, it killed, he planted new trees that he put in.
As you can see, with All Seasons came in, because it's cheaper for us to contract with All Seasons and do our mulch and all that stuff, so when they were here, they did Monument Park, and they took a look at the tree, and-
Yeah, I see, it's spread now, it's spread up to the upper one now.
Yep.
And Dan?
Yes, you know, I see that, go ahead.
Go ahead. I wanted to congratulate you on your award. Was that thirty-seven year?
With Little League, thank you.
With Little League, and it's justly deserved. Somebody can put that in Valentine, and still make the wrong call all those years. It's justly deserved.
Oh, it's not, I love to understand one thing, it's not umpire's, no. I, I oversee a lot of times, but I'm sure I made a lot of wrong calls in that too over thirty-seven years.
You did, I can remember five, four days.
Oh, I second, from nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen eighty-eight, he was right out in the muck, he was but umpires, when the umpires are on, they're so right. That was just an answer.
I gave up high school baseball, I haven't umpired a baseball game in years.
Touche.
I just don't receive the news.
Is that up?
That's all I have.
Does anybody have anything for second session? Some words, it's Donald German.
So.
Second. Home favorite?